Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. One second. This is a Redmond City Council meeting. Study session, there we go, we're better now, held on Tuesday, September 26, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Kritzer, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Carson, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Kahn, and myself, Councilmember Forsyth. We have three items on the agenda tonight: joint meeting with the Arts and Culture Commission, Redmond 2050 Economic Vitality Park Housing and Centers Policies, and council talktime. First up is the joint meeting with the Arts and Culture Commission. I will hand it over to Lorene Hamilton, Director of Parks and Recreation, to introduce the item.
Good evening, City Council and Commissioners, thank you for joining us. This is our Arts and Culture Commission, which is -- our staff liaison for that is Chris Weber, our cultural arts supervisor, and so they're joining us tonight to discuss their work plan, some of the accomplishments that they've had, and to have an open discussion with City Council about priorities as we move forward for our Arts and Culture section. So I'm going to hand it over to our supervisor, Chris Weber, to introduce the commission and kick off this item.
Great, thank you, and welcome, all the Commissioners. I'm happy you're here, and thank you, Council and Mayor. The Redmond Arts and Culture Commission is a nine-member, mayor-appointed, council-confirmed advisory commission. The commission advises the city on arts policies and programs and programming. The individual Commissioners will introduce themselves as part of this presentation, so I will hand it off to them. Thank you.
First of all--
And let me get this--
Thank you, Mayor Bernie, and the entire Redmond City Council, for giving us the opportunity to present our Redmond Arts Commission work over the past year, and even to discuss our future work and the priorities. On this slide you can see we have a commission which is consisted of eight members. We still have one seat vacant, and we also have two youth advocates. They will all introduce themselves. Let's begin with our Chair and our Vice Chair.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Scottkin, I am the Chair for the Redmond Arts and Culture Commission, and I have been with the commission for--
No closer.
It's on, she's just trying to--
Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Carrie Scottkin, I am the Chair for the Redmond Arts and Culture Commission, and I have been a member of the commission for two and a half years.
Good evening, Anna Zanella, Vice Chair with the commission for just a little over two years.
Hello, I'm Kay Be, and I just began as a Commissioner this spring, so I'm so happy to be here. And then--
I'm Lata Sambamurthy, I'm on the Redmond Arts Commission for almost three years. Thank you.
I'm Commissioner Minka Sony, and I've been on the commission for last three years.
My name's Andy Kurapati, and I've been on the commission for one year.
I'm Ari Anayer, I'm a youth advocate, and I joined in the spring.
We can move on to our presentation. This presentation is broken into sections. So first, we are going to talk about our vision, followed by a run of our successes. Then we have, we are going to discuss about a list of our priorities. Then we'll end with a discussion and give a chance for any questions and conversations about the work done around arts and culture. So let's talk about our Arts and Culture Commission mission. We want to be a catalyst for Redmond's diverse and inventive community. Our vision is to create a community that is inspired and connected by arts and culture. In addition, we as a commissioner also adhere to the main value of building a vibrant community through arts and culture that celebrates our diversity and promotes equitable opportunities.
We wanted to visually share the areas of Redmond where art and cultural events have been programmed over the past year. This is a good indication of our reach within the community and highlights the areas where we plan to focus our efforts in the future. Please note that this only, that this includes past, that this includes temporary, new and upcoming projects, permanent art is not shown here. I'm honored to share with you some of our successes since we last met in August of 2022, starting with our operating support grants for 2023. This year, we had a total of eight applicants, and we decided to award the grant to all eight of them for a total of $15,000. These awards are unrestricted support grants for eligible Redmond-based organizations with annual budgets of less than $500,000, whose missions support the community through access to arts, arts education, and cultural heritage experiences. This program is intended to assist with the attraction and retention of Redmond-based emerging and established arts organizations. In addition to funding, the City of Redmond also offers access to a lot of resources and hosts several seminars for organizations to learn about grants, marketing, and more. The Operational Support Art Grant Program was first initiated in 1990, and in 2012, the commission shifted the focus away towards funding arts activations primarily in downtown Redmond. In 2023, the commission refocused the grant towards supporting and retaining Redmond-based arts organizations. This year, the commission also piloted a micro grant program for $250 to support free-to-the-public arts projects and activations. As of this meeting, only one grant has been awarded to the Apex Art Group to help pay for a hanging system to help them continue to have free monthly shows at Victor's Coffee Shop.
The commission was involved in selection and review of city projects, including a number of commissioned permanent public artworks. One series of artworks for the 152nd Avenue Improvements Project in Overlake, and four artworks for the new Redmond Senior and Community Center are currently in the fabrication phase, all set to move into the installation phase in early 2024. The installation of a house post commemorating the Lower Bear Creek Archaeological Site was installed in May, and the Rainbow Crosswalk in downtown Redmond was just installed a few weeks ago, symbolizing the City of Redmond's support of the LGBTQIA+ community. We also had artists working in the community, including our poet laureate. Laura Day is finalizing her final year of programming, currently hosting self-guided walking tours with writing prompts highlighting the cycles of Lakes of Mammoth's ecosystem. We are currently advertising a call to hire a new poet laureate for 2024 and 2025. We have helped and will continue to help the events team by adding art components to the city's two signature events, Derby Days and Redmond Lights, and just hosted the inaugural Downtown Redmond Art Walk. In addition, we financially support our artists and arts organizations with annual grants. The cultural arts staff holds monthly evening office hours that allows artists to drop in and ask questions, as well as train the next generation of public artists with our public arts-intensive Eastside Workshop program, now in its fourth year. The commission also works on selection and review of external projects in the city, including privately-developed public art and Sound Transit public art. Past members of the commission were on the selection panel for Sound Transit public art at the four upcoming stations, and Sound Transit staff regularly visits the commissions with updates. The commission also reviews and approves privately-developed public art projects, including those who are adding art to fulfill a blank wall or gateway requirement, or those adding art to gain extra square footage in the Marymore Village neighborhood where art incentives are offered, or even if privates just voluntarily want to add vibrancy to their buildings with art. We are excited to see all of these upcoming projects in person once they are complete.
Thanks, Chris. So this commission keeps working on four priorities: public art funding, art exhibition space, cultural inclusion and outreach, and opportunities for artists by creating a pipeline for strengthening skills and building resumes. First priority: public art funding. The City Council adopted the Public Art Plan in 2017, which recommended updating the 1991 Public Art Ordinance 1640, 1640, to increase the funding for public art investments and broaden the types of investments eligible to receive public art funding. In 2018, staff presented a recommendation to City Council to revise the ordinance to provide increased unsustainable funding, transparency, and clarity on how public art is funded and invested in. This process was put on hold in late 2019, but the process has reignited, and city staff are planning to brief the City Council in early 2024 with new updated recommendations that will provide increased and predictable funding for public art in Redmond. Second priority: art exhibition spaces. One of the biggest challenges for Redmond-based artists and art organizations is finding space for both the creation and presentation of visual and performance-based art. Thankfully, the Redmond Senior and Community Center was designed to help fulfill some of these gaps. Specifically, there are several walls designed for the exhibition of 2D artworks with art lighting and a hanging system. The commission and cultural arts staff are currently researching and discussing the best way to manage rotating art exhibits in this space with possible expansion into other city buildings like the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village, Old Redmond Schoolhouse, and City Hall. Cultural inclusion and outreach. The Arts and Culture Commission was instrumental in pushing forward the 2017 Cultural Inclusion Resolution and continues to champion connecting our diverse communities, providing a sense of belonging, allowing for cultural expression, fostering mutual respect, and building empathy. Last but not least, artist pipeline. Our ongoing efforts to retain, attract, and provide opportunities for artists and arts organizations to grow and become more stable and successful. This includes transitioning our grant program back to operational support grants for Redmond-based arts organizations, and adding in learning sessions and other support programs. For individual artists, we are invested in training the next generation of public artists who can create culturally-relevant artworks that represent the diverse population of the City of Redmond, so we have been building an artist pipeline to help artists from historically underrepresented communities and all emerging artists increase their skills and build up their resumes. This begins by giving artists training through the public art-intensive Eastside Workshops and providing ongoing support through drop-in office hours, and by providing lower-barrier opportunities such as asphalt art and temporary public art calls, allowing emerging artists to gain experience while building their portfolio. All with the goal of building a local and regional network of artists who have the experience to be awarded larger-scale public art commissions and can sustain a career as professional artist.
Well, thank you so much for your time. We are really excited for any questions on the presentation or thoughts that you may have, you may have on the importance of bringing this art in our community.
Great, thank you so much. That was a great presentation, and thank you to our youth advocates as well, you guys did a great job. We'll open it up to anyone who has questions about the presentation or any questions for the Arts Commission. I'll kick us off by saying I'm very excited to hear that you're going to bring us back a recommendation for increasing arts funding. One of my top priorities for moving forward is that we have more public art, and supporting that through funding is really exciting, so I don't know what the recommendation will be, but I'm very excited to support it. Vice President Kritzer.
Hello. Follow-up question on that, actually. So have you all already begun discussion and work on that recommendation? Just wanted that clarification.
We've begun it, but we're going to restart that probably at the beginning of the year.
Great, well, then I won't ask you for what you have all discussed so far, because I am so curious. But I am interested, it is great to be able to hear about the micro grant program, and I'm just curious to hear a little bit more of how that came about, what your discussions have been about that, and about how we get more people to take advantage of it. I love, I love going into Victor's and seeing all of those art pieces hung there, and it would be great to see more groups take advantage. So I don't know if you all can share more of the context of that program with us.
I can answer that question, I think. So the micro grants came about because there have, there have been other successful programs in other cities that have had a micro grants, and we really wanted to find a way to reach out to the community in smaller ways and still more meaningful ways. A lot of what we do is in support of larger artists or more public artists, and we wanted the opportunity to invite students or just, you know, just regular community members to have a little bit of money to pursue their art. And so I think the challenge is always marketing and getting the word out that this art program exists, so I think if you know any artists that are looking for a micro grant, send them our way. We have very, very few qualifications, so the entrant, the entry is very easy. Barrier is low.
I could add to that, I think we also have one of the artists who got this micro grant, and her work is at Victor's Coffee. And Kay, you're a part of it, right, are you? The micro grant?
Apex had that micro grant before for the Victor's Coffee Shop, and I know one person who, who is in charge of a meetup group for local artists, including many young people. So he's planning to apply for the micro grant to get supplies for the artists who join them, like weekly meetings, so he's preparing now.
Thanks.
Great, other questions from Council? Councilmember Stewart, thank you.
Thank you all so much for the wonderful presentation. I really appreciated the conversation with the MAP and the work you're doing in southeast Redmond, and downtown, of course, with the new lovely crosswalk, and even the work for 152nd Avenue. I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit to your approach with working with neighbors, or how you get feedback from neighbors to incorporate into some of your decision-making?
I can grab that one. The staff, when we're reaching out for, or coming up with the spaces that we're going to have those artworks, one of the things, we do have community panels, and we do try to have members of that, those communities, be part of the selection for the different neighborhoods. And on top of that, especially when we're doing public art plans, that's when we'll do more outreach to try to see what those priorities are for the different neighborhoods.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other questions, thoughts? Lovely feedback for our wonderful Arts Commission? Mayor Bernie.
I might as well chime in. Well, first, thank you all for being here tonight. Really appreciate the wrap-up of the events and the opportunities that you've had this year. I'm really excited to, for you, all of you to be thinking about what's next and how to encourage new, new people to come into the fold of creating art in our community, and I'll be really excited to see what that, what that looks like. I'm curious if you're seeing mostly, you know, are you seeing artwork like dance and song and music, or are you seeing mostly paintings and sculpture and things like that? Like what kind of works are you seeing coming out of our community as you do these intensive and opportunities?
Could I, could I answer? I think all of us have points here to add. I would say it is a mix, both visual as well as performing arts, because there is so much talent in our city. As the demography is growing and changing, you could see all the, for example, all the apartment buildings around the Redmond Downtown Park. As so many people living there, you know, like diverse cultures, and so much talent. I would say a mix of visual arts, performing arts, like including literary arts, music, dance, and theater too.
I just wanted to add to that. In addition, I think, I would say there's a lot more like technology-integrated stuff nowadays, like, for example, we were reviewing stuff for Redmond Lights, and we came across one that was like, it was like a dome almost, and it's just really cool to see how people incorporate technology into artwork, and it just makes it so much better.
Yeah, and I can also add on to that, that we are also, it has become very welcoming for the artists, international-level artists who are getting attracted towards Redmond for bringing their arts, though we definitely give the priorities to our local artists, but, you know, looking at the, at the growing importance of arts and culture and technology, as Youth Advocate just mentioned, it's definitely like, you know, having a great outreach.
Wonderful. Vice President Kritzer.
I'm sure we'll, we'll dig into this more as we talk about the renewed plan in 2024, but I am curious, when you think about needs for our city as our city grows, for art, and how we kind of think ahead, especially tonight after this, we're going to be talking about Redmond 2050 and how we think 30 years out for our community. What are some of our biggest art needs? What would your vision be in, you know, 30 years of where our community would be if it were vibrant in terms of arts and culture?
That's a beautiful question. I could jump in and answer, because I think many cities are already doing that research, and they're working on that. I'm, I'm a part of City of Bellevue Committee for doing this, so people are thinking about, for example, I'm just giving an example from City of Bellevue, because I'm working with them. They say their demography is really changing, and changed within the 10 years, and there are 103 languages spoken in City of Bellevue, and also their population is 60% non-whites. So they are talking about what kind of programs and events they could add in addition to what they have been offering. So we are talking about cross-cultural events. How could you mix all these cultures and present an event? So for example, I organized a festival called Celebration of Spring around the world. So this is kind of a cross-cultural festival or event. So the cities are talking about these kind of cross-cultural events going forward to represent many people, so there were a lot of beautiful ideas that were thrown there on the table, you know, we could do that, we could do this, because there are a lot of similarities as well as differences, like unity and diversity. So that's what they are concentrating now, and I think we should also think about cross-cultural events going forward.
And then for me, speaking a little bit personally here, Redmond has a really beautiful writing community, and I'd really love to see more growth and opportunities for that community in the coming years.
Just one more thing to add, I think personally, I would like to see more public art expression downtown. There's so many opportunities, and I think public art, you know, if it's murals or some sort of installations that happen around the city, just create a really vibrant pedestrian experience, and we're, as we're encouraging people to like not drive so much, you know, not drive so much, be more pedestrian-friendly as we create more of an urban landscape. I think having these little opportunities for people to interact with art on a very personal pedestrian level is going to be, I think it's just going to change the vibe of Redmond, or just make it feel much more active. So that's my hope for, as Redmond grows.
Yeah, and building on that, in that landscape, I would like to see more spaces for art, especially performing arts.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
Yes, and actually, we also want to see, like now with the new upcoming senior center, definitely want to see, like, you know, in the coming years, that how we can engage the senior community to be also, be a part of our arts and cultural commissions.
Mayor Bernie.
If I can add a little bit, we were able to get a little sneak peek last week into the, was it just last week? Last week into the new building, and the spaces that are, I know you've seen that, you know, you've been looking at art to go in that building, but the spaces that are being created have these kind of amazing hallways that I think will be really a perfect venue for so much art in our community, and the ability to have the art that's there permanently, as well as installations happening with our community. So I look forward to thinking about ways that we can bring in those, those pieces into the, into our facilities, that one and the others that we have as we move forward, but I'm pretty excited about that. It really lends itself to that kind of opportunity.
And if I might add, as the mayor was just speaking, yeah, we went and walked the community center last week, and walked through the community room with the stage, and I know how important performing arts space is, and so that room is actually going to be able to seat around 400 people for a performance with a fixed stage and lighting and really great AV and everything. I know it doesn't meet every need, and yet it actually expands the capacity that we had from the old senior center, and so, you know, the feedback that we got from both the Arts and Culture Commission and the community as a whole, and a lot of our cultural groups as well, is actually what drove us to have that fixed stage, because that was a big source of conversation of, do, you know, do you have a fixed stage in there? So I'm really excited to see that space come to life as well, and then we also made it so it could be used as a flexible classroom, so it has a door that will close so that people can use it during the week as a classroom, but it can be used as a performance space as well on weekends and evenings. So I'm excited about that, because I know how big of a need that is for our community as well.
Okay. It's, it's kind of like magic. So also rehearsal spaces, and people are looking for rehearsal spaces in Redmond, because I know many groups are coming and making use of the City Hall corridor outside for their dance practices and all that. So Redmond really needs more spaces, you know, for performances as well as rehearsals.
Great, thank you. Hearing all of your thoughts and vision for arts moving forward into the next 30 years is actually really exciting. Love hearing all the thoughts, all the plans, and totally on board with you, and I'm seeing a lot of smiles, so I, I think we're all excited to, to see your work in the coming years, and thank you all so much for being with us tonight. Not sure if Mr. Weber has anything else to wrap us up? No?
No, just thank you so much.
Great. Thank you all so much, we really appreciate you taking the time tonight. Next up, we have our Redmond 2050 Economic Vitality Park Housing and Centers Policy. Director Carol Helen, Planning and Community Development, will introduce the item as I try to speak slowly to allow the team to get up here.
Yes, thank you. You can sit in here if you don't want to use one of the janky mics.
All right, thank you. I did hear this item get introduced, so I am Carol Helen, I'm the Planning and Community Development Director here at the City of Redmond, and I just wanted to make a few introductory remarks, and I'm going to go off-script a little bit, so I hope I don't just astonish the staff. Tonight, we're scheduled to discuss the final drafts of Economic Vitality and the Parks Element and Plan Components of our Comprehensive Plan Update, which we have branded and continue to say Redmond 2050. I also just wanted to note that we are at a little bit of a transition point in the process, so you are seeing the-- So you are seeing the final versions, final draft versions of Phase 1 of the process, and next month, we will actually be starting the beginning of the Phase 2 process. So I want to make sure we all know where we are, because I, because you were asked to do very different things on these two pieces of the process. At the beginning, you initiated the process, there was a lot of visioning, you provided direction to the Planning Commission. That was largely on items that drove kind of the whole program, the whole plan update. And with specificity, some information about parks, because we had to get done with that functional plan to be on the cycle that was required by the state. So we did things that had inputs to our transportation functional plans. We did things that had inputs to our economic vitality. We sought your feedback of, are we headed in the right direction? Because we had kind of drafted things based on other policy decisions you had made in the last few years. So the Housing Action Plan, your climate, climate declaration, your Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. All of that was prepared in draft, in form, to help with the visioning process, for you to give direction to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission, throughout their project, seeks public engagement to essentially understand and prepare, to understand the issues at hand, hold a public hearing, and then present a recommendation to you. One of the reasons why some of the materials were so long is under our municipal code as well as under state code, we're required to give you that Planning Commission recommendation. So it's the entire piece of the recommendation that they've made to you. We will look for ways to sort that more effectively, so you can pinpoint where the policies are. So one thing we tried in this packet material, for instance, was to direct you very specifically to where the policies could be found in the Planning Commission recommendation, and where the park and arts, recreation, culture, and conservation element could be found within the Planning Commission recommendation, as well as the actual park plan. So I just wanted to make sure, do we have any questions about where we are in the process about Phase 1? So that, because next month, we'll be talking about Phase 2, and we'll be kind of going back to that early stage of kind of visioning and initiation and providing feedback to the Planning Commission, so that they can do their work and provide you a recommendation later. With the expectation that all of this work, except for the Parks Plan, which is coming sooner, will be wrapped up and completed by the end of 2024. So we're trying to create an opportunity for you to have smaller bites, in order to get to the whole ordinance that you will be adopting, that will be, reflect the entire Comprehensive Plan later next year. So any questions about where we are in the process map right now?
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for that very clear description. My question is, how long is Phase 2 with the Planning Commission?
Sure. So we'll actually, I'm gonna, we will actually address that at the next meeting, when we talk about Phase 2, because my hope is we don't kind of conflate the two. But we will be kind of diving in with the initial rounds early next month, and then with the Planning Commission, you will probably receive a recommendation middle of the year.
Just trying to get an idea of comparing the length of this process with the next one, so thank you.
So the other thing is, I am going to send out a link to the Timeline and Phases page of Redmond 2050 that the staff have been keeping up to date, that show everywhere we are in that timeline. So it shows you what hearings have happened, what have yet, what has yet to occur. So it can keep you very grounded in where we are in the process, because it's been a lot. There were so many, that was a lot of foundational work you did early 2021, where we were talking about population and growth and jobs, and some of the initial feedback that we received from you even during the budget, about information that would go into functional plans and the CIP. So it has been a lot of work. And if there are mechanisms for us to help you stay more connected to where we are in that work, and just clear about what's the review at any particular moment in time, please let us know, because we will certainly be adaptable to the extent that we can.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer had a question?
Just two questions on the process before we move forward. So my understanding from what you're saying is that last, two weeks ago's discussion, as well as tonight's discussion for these elements, essentially are us, if we're, if we haven't, if we leave anything, if everything seems to be resolved, is that we're kind of closing those chapters and saying, we're going to put them into a final package at the end of, or sometime later next year, once we process the other pieces and will vote on them. Should council members have questions that come up on what's on the docket tonight, or on the previous session? What would be the best mechanism, if any of those, those come up, for, for those issues to be raised?
Sure, feel free to send those to me directly. I will share them with the staff.
Great.
So that's probably a great avenue. You know, the way you described that, Councilmember Kritzer, reminds me that it has a lot of parallels to the way we undertook the budget process, where we looked at some of the priorities. We would look at a priority, would spend some time on it, and then we would kind of put it aside, understanding, we can go back to the end, that's with some fine tuning, but that should be things around the edges at the time we get to next year. Except for the Park Plan, which I'm going to continue to hold out, because we need to do that sooner.
Yeah, which I was going to ask, on the Park Plan, is the discussion tonight, is the understanding that this is kind of our last big discussion on Park Plan, or are we going to have another discussion before we actually take a vote on that?
This will be our last really big conversation, and then we can, I can bring it back to PES if you'd like, but we are hoping to bring it for adoption on November 6th.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And then how will, if council members do reach out to you, say, in February on something, how will that be brought back to council to get a kind of general consensus?
So we will continue to go back through, we will continue to go through the elements we've not yet discussed. And then, when everything is put together, we will put it all together. So the next time you will see it will be in a form where everything is a single adoption that will go into an ordinance, because Comprehensive Plan Amendments need to be adopted by ordinance. At that, oh, go ahead.
So I guess I was just wanting to make sure that if someone brings something forward, that there's full council buy-in?
Yes.
Okay.
So we will collect those, almost probably in its own kind of running issue matrix, if we're going back to something, where that we can go through that issues matrix when we get to the end. Because that'll be a good place to look across all the elements, to see if there's any conflicts, any things that you think create tensions that you hadn't anticipated. You can look across the whole thing, and we can go back if we received comments on any of the earlier elements, and vet those at that time.
Great.
So we won't make changes after Phase 1 until we get to the very end, until we get more towards the end of the project.
Great, thank you. Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, and I just want to add to that, that the hope is that there shouldn't be any big outlying issues come next year, because of all of the work the staff is doing, reaching out to the community and all of that. So I hope that there's, if there's any bit of significant things, that they're raised, like now, versus reopening that up again, unless there's some major conflict that happens, which the staff has been working through. So I, I just encourage all the council members to make sure they're really in tune to what, what we're discussing, where we are right now, so that we don't feel like we're going, we're back-talking too much as we move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. So with that kind of level-setting in mind, for tonight specifically, you have, you last saw these two topics on September 5th, when the Parks and Long Range Planning Staff introduced the Planning Commission's recommended updates to the Economic Vitality Element, the Parks, Arts, Recreation, Culture, and Conservation Element, and the Associated Park Plan. Those were the Phase 1 elements, and they were some of the first to be drafted, as we were just talking about, back in 2021, and have been ongoing continuous public engagement since that time. After multiple drafts and rounds of community engagement, this summer, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed updates and recommended that council approve them. So that's the point in time we are now. And our goal tonight is to highlight the changes we've made, based on input from council and others, as part of the community outreach process, and to ask you, are there changes you want to see before these come back to you for action? The Park Element and the Park Plan, as we noted a couple of times already this evening, because there is some deadline associated with that, will come back to you for action first, and staff is targeting November 6th, as Caroline noted, because the Recreation and Conservation Office deadline is the end of the year. So the Economic Vitality Element will come back to you with the rest of the Redmond 2050 elements later next year. And tonight, I am joined by Caroline Chapman, and Jeff Churchill, and Glenn Coyle, and they are going to walk through just a brief PowerPoint presentation to capture those, what we heard, and how you can see it in the various elements that are before you this evening.
Thank you, Carol. And good evening, council members. It's nice to be here. Most of the slides here, or really all of them, except for one, are from your September 5th packet. They're really just to put us back in the frame of mind of what, what's in the Park Element, what's in the Park Plan, what's in the Economic Vitality Element, and what has changed, really, since, between the first drafts and the final drafts. And so mainly, these are resource slides, but we can spend as much or as little time as needed on each one. I'll turn it over to Caroline for Parks.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, so for the Park Element and the Park Plan, they really coalesce around these four goals, which should be very familiar to you now, not only because we have been talking about them, but also, I hope they feel really intuitive and aligned with a lot of the work that is going on citywide. These goals are new to the Park Plan from the 2017 Plan, but really do feel aligned with the work that we have been doing as a Parks and Recreation Department, and really continuing and formalizing that work. And our expectation is that these four goals are really going to help us prioritize our investments in the department over the next six years. So being welcoming and inclusive city means our park and recreation offerings need to be accessible to all, which we're doing by focusing our investments both in high-need areas, and building out our existing system, looking at not only implementing our ADA Transition Plan, but new facilities being universally and inclusively designed. We also have had a lot of conversations about the growth Redmond 2050 is planning towards, and that impacts our Park Plan. And one area of focus, that's a highlight of an evolution from 2017, is that emphasis on creative partnerships to help expand our system, like what we saw in Overlake with Estera Park. And this is really going to help us take advantage of the growth that's happening, and improve our level of service metrics during time of high land costs, excuse me. And then talking about being innovative, one area that we have really already been working towards, but is now more formalized, is prioritizing flexible and multi-use of facilities. And we think this will help us be more nimble and responsive to trends, and as our community grows. So I want to highlight a few other key changes. Jeff, if you could go to the next slide, that are in the Park Plan and the Park Element. So for the policies that are in the Park Element, council has had a chance to review those, and there are no major changes from Draft 2 to the final draft. But as a kind of brief refresher, we had something like 65 policies in the past Comprehensive Plan, that were really a mix of policies and actions, and many of them were duplicative. We had similar policies for both the P, the A, the R, the C, and the C. And so we were able to really streamline those into 17 or so policies that are really aligned around those four goals that you just saw. And the more detailed actions that were previously in the Comprehensive Plan are now a part of the functional plan in actions or in the recommendations. But the other large change that we have in this plan is around our level of service, which we simplified to be more aligned with our goals around complete neighborhoods, and having residents being within a 10-minute walk or half-mile of a park or trail. And we really think that this simplified measure is going to help us better analyze system gaps, and how investments in the system can improve that level of service. We also, in this Park Plan, are really looking at what an urbanizing community will need, and how that has changed, and will change our recreational needs. One thing to call out is that we are planning for smaller urban park amenities, and we've included a new park type or classification of a plaza or parklet. We already have a few plazas and parklets in our system, but this is really, as a new classification, will help us set expectations around what we're looking for in our urban amenities as we build out. And we're also looking at, working on, and are already working on developing a process to partner with developers on the creation of privately-owned public spaces, or POPs, similar to Estera Park, or the community gardens that we had at Spectra and Marymore Village. So those were some of the key changes that may impact the work that we do, or be a shift, or in how we've been doing our work, but really feel good about how they are aligning with the overall work of Redmond 2050, and where we're headed as a city.
Great. I'd like to just open it up and ask council members if this aligns with the visions that we've all been talking about for the last several months, make sure that we're not leaving anything out, and just open it up for some conversation. Anyone want to kick us off? Councilmember Fields.
I'm wondering if there's some way to understand what this means in the, in the sense of expansion? Like, do you have a number of acres? Do you have idea about a number of parks? I'm a little, also a little bit concerned about the definition of a plaza and a parklet, and privately-owned public spaces. I mean, I would like to get a sense of what, what is the scope or the magnitude of what you think we will need to grow and implement and build in our city boundaries to create, not just within, what it was at a half a mile of reaching a park, but of reaching something that actually has meaning? How can we get a sense of what you're talking about?
Sure. So there's a few ways that we have done that in the past, and when you're talking about acres of park, or how much we actually need, that is a metric that we have in the Park Plan, and we've also projected that out into what that would look like by neighborhood, with the expected growth that we have. However, the NRPA, which is our national kind of guiding organization, their new best practices are less about number of acres, but more about the types of amenities and qualities, as well as demand on the park system. So that is included in our analysis, again, looking neighborhood by neighborhood of where we're expecting that growth, and what that demand would be on our current parks. Within the system that we have, there are five or six parks that are undeveloped, that it's, that ability to bring those online would certainly help with demand, and that's, some approaches and recommendations are in the Park Plan to pursue those. And I'd be happy to talk more about the, the concerns around plazas and POPs, but those are, the plazas especially, are a very different classification, and so wouldn't necessarily meet the same need as like a neighborhood park would with, that typically has a playground and things like that. But we wanted to acknowledge that we will be seeing more of these types of developments in our city.
And if I might add, this is Director Hamilton, I appreciate that very much, Caroline. Throughout the Park Plan, there is a lot of nuance as well, so there's kind of a lot of different maps and things like that. Some of them will show all of these different plazas and parklets and POPs. And some of them really are focusing on the neighborhood and community and developed parks. So it allows us to really have a much more nuanced look. We're trying, you know, in these meetings, sometimes things get a little simplified, so I do want to assure council that we're being really nuanced in that, because as you pointed out, Councilmember Fields, you know, I visited Flagpole Park. I don't know if you've visited Flagpole Park before, but it is a bench and a flagpole and a planter outside of a bank in downtown Redmond. So, you know, that's not going to really meet the needs of our growing community. However, POPs are going to be, are a program that we are really working to develop, and working very hard with our friends in planning to ensure that it's a solution that works. And we're very involved in those development agreements to ensure that they are mutually beneficial, and helping us meet the goals within our Park Plans. So we don't enter into those lightly. Estera Park is our first one that's coming online, and we're working very closely with those property managers out at Estera Park, to ensure that that is a really beneficial space, and is operated per park rules. So just also want to assure council that as we look at these kind of development agreements and these privately-owned public spaces, that they are looked at through the lens of, are they helping us meet the goals of the Park Plan that has been a are they helping us meet the goals of the park plan that has been adopted by city council?
So I could follow up real quick?
Sure.
So I think it would be really helpful. I've heard concerns about Estera Park and how it's, you know, from people who live in the area, that it really is not going to meet the needs. And I actually don't know. But I would think it might be really helpful if Estera Park was provided not only as an example in words, but in an example, maybe sometime of, here's the kind of thing that we're likely to see. And I'll speak sort of bluntly here. When I look at downtown Redmond and the growth that happened there, in my mind, and this is just me, I see a big miss. I see an opportunity that could have been taken to add more interesting public space and more connectivity between the parks. Right now, downtown park is difficult from a lot of people that I talk to, and to get to if you don't live there, and to use. So I guess what I'm trying to find is some sort of visioning tool that says, here's what we're talking about. Here's what we expect the growth over the next 20 some odd years to result. Right now, I'm having difficulty visioning what these phrases and words and descriptions actually mean in terms of sort of a vision of how it will, how it will result.
I think that's a really great question. And if I might just address Estera Park. Estera Park is one step in meeting a huge need that we have for parkland in Overlake. We have Saritage Park, which is going to be another privately-developed park that will be a public park. That has not gone through its master planning stages yet, but I agree with you, something that Caroline and I have talked very extensively about is how do we work with these types of agreements to ensure that we are getting the amenities that are identified as needs and gaps within our system? And so I don't think I have a perfect answer for you tonight, because it's something that we are continuing to operationalize and figure out, how do we find those kind of mutual wins while addressing some of the needs that these developers might have that include things like insurance, because insurance around play structures is a very different thing than an open space? And so as for a 20-year visioning tool, I would say I don't know that the park plan, you know, it's a six-year functional plan, so it's not really always looking that far out. That being said, it really is a great improvement on our last park plan in that it takes us a step further into that visioning and will allow us to, as we operationalize it, not just look at, oh, we kind of think we could use an extra play structure downtown checkmark, but like you just said, these connectivity pieces, how do we kind of have mutual wins of connecting parks, connecting trails, as well as hitting amenities that we might be missing? So I don't know if that is helpful at all, but that's kind of what I think we'd be able to provide, and Caroline is.
Yeah, and I would just say that the park element really sets that, of the comprehensive plan really sets that vision in tone, and that takes that 20-year view. So some of that vision is described in that.
So I really appreciate the response and from both of your responses. I feel like the question was well-understood, which I always appreciate. For me, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but as we go forward, I'm going to be looking for at least some evidence that what manifests from things that we call planning and partnerships will be close, will be an interesting place to live. So I'm trying to put it in simplistic words. I appreciate the complexity of what you're doing, but at the end of the day, for me, to cast a vote, I will be looking for those, that evidence that this in fact puts us on a trajectory that creates that increased livability that you've described, and the amenities actually mean something other than a flagpole and a bench. Great example, by the way. So I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. I don't see whose hand is raised. Is that you, Ms. Stewart? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And apologies for not being able to be there in person. I really appreciate this conversation. I am very grateful to the staff for the many months that have gone into this final draft of the park plan. I think one of the things that would be helpful for us and for community at this point is a high-level, a high-level understanding. We're throwing these words around, right? Like Redmond 2050, which is bigger than this functional plan, and then this functional plan has this visioning of 20 years, and it's a six-year functional plan. So I believe I got that right. So at the end of six years, what does success look like? At the end of 20 years, what should the community feel confident and expecting? We all know that things happen and things change, and we're working to build a more resilient community. But today, the visionaries that you are, six years, 20 years, what does success look like for you after we adopt this plan?
That is such a great question, and I think that you must have been listening to mine and Caroline's meetings around the park plan. We, Caroline and Cameron, have been working really closely with our communications team to actually create, I wouldn't call it a one-pager, because it's actually more like a little four-pages, like folded, kind of thing. But it really does map out what this would look, what success would look like in six years, what are some of the major milestones we're hoping to hit, and what are some of the major initiatives that would help us reach that increased livability? So one of, for example, one of the things is looking for comprehensive signage plans throughout our system that would help create better wayfinding within our parks and trails and spaces. Being able to, for a community member to be able to pick up kind of, I don't want to call it a brochure, but infographic that would help kind of guide them through what we're hoping to succeed in in the next six years. That is something that we're working on, and we are hoping to be able to have a draft to share with you. It will not be perfect or finalized, but we'd be happy to share that so that maybe it could also help you, Councilmember Fields, see some of the visioning that's going into the implementation of the new park plan.
I would like to add-
I really appreciate that. Sorry, go ahead.
I would like to add that at the beginning of every comprehensive plan chapter, and realizing you've only seen two, there's, it says, there's a vision statement section. And I think the intent of that is to answer the question that you posed, Councilmember Stewart, is what does success look like in 20 years? With a 20-year plan, it's much, it's going to be much less specific than what Director Hamilton just talked about for a six-year functional plan. But it is that, it's that word picture of what are we hoping to achieve with these policies? And I think as you read these, we're very interested in kind of how you think these vision statements maybe could be shaped in the plan to really communicate that better. So we welcome feedback on that.
Well, I really appreciate that from the both of you, and I appreciate the idea of the communication tool. It's one thing for us as a council member to spend the time now tracking the different vision statements, and we've studied them so much. So by this time, as we've been saying, you know, these really do represent the direction that the community and the council have been given. What will happen is four or five months from now, we'll get a question from a resident, a constituent, who doesn't know or feels that their thing that they care most deeply about might not yet be planned for yet. And so for us to represent that, your government's actually thought of that. And here, I could show you the roadmap to what's coming in the future. And we actually, it's my favorite thing. I actually love National Night Out for that reason. You get a question about, you know, this traffic light that folks are really desperate to have, and you're like, oh, it's actually coming online in six months, you know? So those kinds of communication tools for ourselves, as well as members of the community, are just super helpful so that we can all be in alignment on the team. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Critzer, and then Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, well, thank you all for this thoughtful discussion and for all the work on this. It's really cool, and I think overall, the answer to, are we getting it right on this, on the park element? I really think we are. It's exciting to see. And I think to Director Hamilton's point from, I think definitely a piece that I'm very interested in is around how we not only build out the park infrastructure, but how we communicate with the public about it. I know also our Parks Commission has brought this up in terms of also like online resources that folks have to be able to know about what's out there. I can definitely say from the perspective of someone who constantly is looking for new places to take kids, that I still actually discover new spots around Redmond, and it's amazing how much park infrastructure we actually have, and especially like playgrounds and other types of things. But, you know, being able, thinking about, you know, how do we make it even easier, especially, you know, when we have different types of uses? For example, if you're looking for a little kid playground, you know, how would you most easily know where the best ones are in the city versus which ones are structured for bigger kids? Or if you're looking for ADA-accessible paths, you know, versus other types of trails, you know, making that as easy as possible? But I think, you know, and I asked this question, and I appreciated the answer in the matrix, and would love just for you all to share on the record. One question I do get as a lot from parents is around, you know, how we think about playgrounds or even things like the downtown park. When I think about our park infrastructure, we do have to think about creating a variety of different amenities. So like downtown park, one of the big features is really having that water feature. I often tell people, because we don't have, we don't have a playground there, because we have the splash pad, which everyone really wanted. And you can walk about six blocks over and go to Anderson Park, where there's an amazing playground. But a lot of people may live right next to downtown park, and really, it's that wayfinding of saying like, hey, if you walk six blocks over, you're going to be able to find this. But I am curious if you could share a little bit with us, for the listening public, in particular, how we think about different popular amenities like playgrounds, and, you know, how many we want to have. Do we have any sort of thinking in terms of, is it mostly per distance, like we have in terms of level of service? Or do we ever think about like per capita, especially if we have a couple of these dense population centers, you know, how much of any one amenity we want to have? Can you share a little bit about the thinking that went into the information that's in here on that?
I thought for sure you were going to take that one. Yes, so when we are thinking about amenities, there's a lot of things that are going into it. And we definitely heard the desire for having play structures in the downtown core and in our urban centers. We look at things like gaps that you'll see in the park plan. You know, we do have one map that is distance from playgrounds, and so when we're looking to put a new playground in, we can see where are we currently underserved? We are also, when we're talking about expanding access for all, that is really something that we want to dive into by cutting it a few different ways. Do we have amenities for different age groups, abilities? Like you mentioned, having something for small children, that totlot, can we call that out and share that information? And something that we'll talk about with our joint commission meeting is, we have heard that communication piece really loud and clear from the community in this process, and it's something that we are focusing on and working on, not only wayfinding, but also just promoting those pieces. Because we have so many wonderful parks and so many wonderful amenities, and it's how do you get to those places, know that they're there in your neighborhood? We know we have a lot of residents in Redmond who are moving here from other places, and as we're growing, it's going to be that constant education to share with new folks what we have here. I feel like I'm missing a piece of your question, Lorraine. Do you have anything to add? Well, I, okay.
I admit, the one part was on per capita. Do we have any thoughts on that?
Oh, per capita. We do have some metrics in there that compare the city of Redmond to other similar-sized cities. It's really hard to do apples to apples, and it's really more about the quality. And so when you look at our level of service in our, the park plan, there's a few quantitative and qualitative analysis of that. But short answer is, it's complicated. But at every, like when we were going into southeast Redmond and developing that, we are looking at, what's in this immediate area that's available? What's in the broader system? Are there gaps that we could be filling? And then also, what is it that the community wants? And from there, we can make those calls.
And I think the only thing I would add is that part of the conversation that comes up around particularly things like play structures is having to be a lot more creative in the way that we implement these things. So because of the growth within Redmond, there is not necessarily a large quantity of land that's being, like, that's waiting to be scooped up to become a traditional park, right? And so being really creative about this, the land that we do own and the spaces that we do have, a lot of cities have implemented things like linear play structures along parks and trails that are in more densely urban, more densely populated urban areas. And so we've been talking a lot about some of those creative ways that we can look at more, some of these more traditional park elements, so that we can ensure that we are providing as much access as we grow to the standards that we have in front of us.
That's great. Thank you. And if I may, can I ask one other follow-up? One other item that we talked a lot about going into the park planning process was around, and you mentioned it as one of our key, like, four areas, was around offering diverse programming and also infrastructure for a increasingly diverse population and how we kind of think about that. Can you just share with us a little bit of what we actually see in terms of some new innovations of what are planned in the park plan? So I know that was something that we had been interested in and would love for the public to be able to hear a little bit about, you know, what they can expect.
Well, Lorraine just mentioned one, the innovation around, yeah, the linear playgrounds or facilities within our trails. Programming, I'd look to Lorraine to maybe respond to for the recreation side, as I'm not as well-versed.
Yeah, I would say that, I would say probably two different things. One is, we consistently work to ensure that we have really diverse programming opportunities, and we partner with a lot of different community groups to ensure that we're kind of offering that wide array. Also want to just kind of point out that with the park plan, it's pointing out these kind of goals that we have, right? To diversify our programming, to diversify our infrastructure, which means we might not always have those operational plans in place yet. And so the goals would be then, you know, we've heard loud and clear from our community that they want more diversity within our programming, and they want us to communicate out more clearly about that diversity within our programming. And so part of the goal of the park plan would then, one of those goals would be for us to do the outreach to understand what that means, because that means a lot of different things to a lot of different communities, and then make sure that we're able to then sustainably implement that. So programming is kind of one of those ones that's a constantly moving target, because we might get it right one year, and then the next year, that same programming plan is not going to be valid anymore. We have to kind of reinvent it to keep ourselves relevant with our community. So that's what I would say, is that it's also going to be part of the implementation to do that community listening, to be able to diversify that programming, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Appreciate coming back to this from last week, and I just wanted to mention that I think the park plan is amazing. Great job. Very detailed, and I like the conversation that we've been having specifically on the plaza and pocket parks. I think that was some great questions and kind of getting some clarity around that. I appreciated the idea of urbanizing our parks a lot. And one question I had is sort of related to the last conversation as well regarding infrastructure. And I'm looking at page 195 of the park plan right now, and it has a six-year proposed CIP project. One thing that I would love to see or hear more about is our plan to add pocket parks and plazas to that programmatic plan. It sure is.
So much alliteration.
I need a pop filter, but I guess the background of that question is, if this is going to be put into our six-year functional plan, I'm not seeing it on the proposed CIP project list. And I'm wondering if it's because they don't meet CIP threshold for the value- project list. And I'm wondering if it's because they don't meet CIP threshold for the value of those projects and what we could do to sort of look at, I don't know, a quarter million dollar spend, what does that look like in terms of tiny little parks around the city? And I have a follow-up question on that, if you have a direct answer for me on that.
Yes. So, no, I'm sorry. I was just looking at, looking up your, you said page 197?
195.
So can I clarify? The question is, if we're identifying that plazas and pocket parks are essentially kind of a goal that we have set out, why are they not on the CIP?
It's not, it's not that direct of a question. Was it?
Or why is it not, is it?
Are we going to see them if it's not on the CIP?
In that list. So I think that one of the reasons you're not seeing it on that list is because a lot of times pocket parks and plazas are actually part of development agreements for us. And so those are not usually city-developed. They are usually in partnership with planning and the development agreements that come out of planning. But they become publicly accessible spaces that abide by, you know, the rules that are set forth in those development agreements. Often, they have to fall in line with park rules.
That makes much more sense. And I appreciate that answer. Thank you. And then-
Can Caroline add? She has something to add.
There was another piece to that. And it's, it will be necessary for us to acquire those spaces. Lorraine was sort of hinting at that. So since we don't yet have them, it's a project of opportunity. And so we have it listed, but maybe not identified yet where that would be. So we have that flexibility if an opportunity comes up that we could move forward on it.
Okay. To clarify that, that's not necessarily a CIP project. That sounds like a real estate purchase. Or?
Yes.
Okay. That makes more sense. Did I get, did I get it right? Okay, cool. And then my second question on that are just kind of a big picture or a comment perhaps is if we've considered looking at in not only the use of our existing public spaces like parking spots, I think our street reeds program has had a lot of success. And that could be considered another option for like pocket parking, those kinds of things. I've seen in Seattle and Bellingham and other places around the state as well, be very successful little opportunities for activating our public space. And then I wouldn't want to forget about rooftops either. There's quite a bit of unused space there. And it would be really neat to see what ideas come out of the Parks Department if we are able to leverage that space as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in before we go for round two here. I love the idea of rooftop activation. I know that that was something that the city of Seattle had as a thing. And it was great when I worked downtown to be able to like go up to a rooftop and have lunch in a little park that not necessarily a ton of people knew about. So I love that idea. I just wanted to say, I definitely feel like I've seen a lot of the priorities that I've brought up multiple times, such as the wayfinding element, making sure that people know how to get from bike lanes to trails and safely accessing how to get around town without a car is, is great to see that and great to have the bigger conversation and thinking about, you know, the splash pad to Anderson Park. Love seeing the addressing play for community with different abilities. So thank you for hearing that. Really appreciate that. The one thing that I did notice was in the question matrix, the trail conversation and the delineators, the response that was in there was not quite what I was actually thinking. So what I was thinking was, we would have, we would pre-design wider trails, excuse me, that would have delineation so that it actually is safer for people who are walking to be separated from people who are on motorized scooters or in wheelchairs or on bikes. I know the Cross Kirkland Corridor and parts of the East Trail that are going to be in Bellevue have a really wide gravel shoulder. And I know that that is great for people who are just out casually strolling or people who are trying to get a more trail run experience. And it provides a wider space so that when people are cycling through there, it just gives everyone a lot more safety and a lot more flexibility. And, you know, when there's kids on new bikes or people with dogs and you get a lot of congestion, it just really helps out if those are separated and delineated so that people know where they, where they should safely plan to recreate. The one thought I had on the arts section was, I would love to see more, a little, a little bit of focus on public art that is actually interactive and could be considered as a play structure or some sort of play element to that public art. Just a, just a little thought after we had our great conversation with our Arts and Culture Commission. And then one thing that I did want to note was, we haven't really talked a lot about the aquatic section. I know there's still this push for regional opportunity. I appreciate that the, the section about the, that I had pointed out last time was pulled from this, it looks like potentially. But from, from everything that I've heard from community, it was, it's much more been about access to small watercraft getting into the lake or getting into the river and less, I've heard a lot less about that regional pool effort, even though I know that's been around for a long time. So just wanted to give that feedback as well. And then I will go on Councilmember Fields.
Am I kicking off round two?
You are kicking off round two.
Round two. Well, a part of my question got answered over the past five minutes. As I thought about parklets and plazas and partnerships with developers, I was looking for ways to encourage the development agreements, actually, and you spoke to that, to meet our needs. And, and, you know, we're trying to encourage active people and active lifestyles. And we're trying to create community. And, but, you know, our values also talk about resiliency and mitigating climate change and heat sinks. So it's a very complex thing that we're talking about. And I just, I don't think there's a question here, but when I think in terms of, you know, the perspective from a developer, they're, they're going to want to, for them, it's a checklist. Here's what the city wants me to do. In order to do what I want to do, I have to do these things. And I think that we have to be very mindful if we're going, if that's the approach we're going to take. And I, and I get that we will, and I know why. That we, I don't know whether that sits in our park plan or where that is, but we need to have some very strong ideas about what we expect from those partnerships and how people will live. And I'll go finish with going back to, and I've said this in the past years, how impressed I was when I was in Barcelona, Spain, because the parks were really interesting to me. They, they had things that I had not seen before. You know, water fountains for people, but below water fountains for their dogs. They had places that adults could play games, ping pong, bocce ball, whatever. And they had things for kids. So how we ensure that the approach we're taking will actually make that space for livability and community and safety, I think development agreements and guidance on development agreements is a really important part of it.
I would just like to say, Councilmember Fields, that we completely agree. And Caroline and Cameron have been working closely with planning to ensure that we are creating spaces that are true needs for our community. We don't want to only have these little pocket plazas with benches and, and flagpoles and planters. They serve a need, right? I mean, they are good to have scattered throughout your city. And yet, wanting to make sure that we have that increased livability, that increased creativity. Yeah. And I just, I really appreciate the conversation tonight because I, you know, not all of these operational pieces make it into something like the plan, because the plan is meant to guide the operations for us for the next six years. And yet, things like, you know, art that is play structures, those are conversations that we've had within our office. And so a lot of the ways that you guys are talking about parks and the way that we are wanting to implement our park plan are the ways that we want to implement it as well. And we have really tried to infuse it in there. And we will also do our best to make sure that we are bringing that into the conversations to assure you that that is how we will be moving forward for this next six years.
Thank you very much.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
So we're doing a second round. And the CIP, part of this was brought up for the project list for 20 years. I, I think I would be remiss if I didn't note that I noticed that we don't have in the list, or unless I missed it, the Cultural and Performing Arts Center listed, which is something that I have routinely heard a lot from community members. I think it was referenced tonight, sent by our Arts and Culture Commissioners. I do know I'm excited as reference tonight that we're going to have a great new performing arts space within our senior and community center. But I also, you know, as part of my service on behalf of the council on the One Redmond Board, have heard updates regularly from the One Redmond Foundation about how they're seeking to go out to do a planning process to look at what it could look like to build some sort of public-private partnership, cultural arts and performance center. And I don't know if there's a role for the city in terms of at least setting the vision of getting there. When we think about 20 years out, like maybe it's not in our six-year vision, but in terms of creating more performance arts spaces, more cultural arts spaces. Anyway, just curious if you can speak to that, why it doesn't show up as much in the vision here?
I can absolutely speak to that. So that cultural arts study that was done for that performing arts center was actually done, I would just say, at a very different time for our city. We had community center space. Since that, since that plan was written, we lost the vast majority of our community center space. So I would just say, the infrastructure that currently exists within our city, it's not the same. We had the senior center. We had a lease on all of OHRSH, which really helped meet those community center needs. When we lost both OHRSH and the senior center, I would say that the priorities shifted to more flexible multi-use space as opposed to dedicated space, right? So that's, as we have built the Redmond Senior and Community Center, we've had a lot of conversations around that. As we look at park amenities, we work really hard to ensure that our park amenities are flexible, that can be used for multi-generations, multi-uses. I do believe that there is a need for additional cultural arts space. I would say that I don't see it being really feasible for us to build a dedicated cultural arts facility as the city and then to operate it. We've let One Redmond Foundation know that we'd be more than happy to be a part of whatever process that they have. But I think that it, it's part of our goal, mine and Caroline's, of over the next kind of two to three years to really look at the facility plans that have been set forth for both our community centers and that cultural arts plan, to kind of say, okay, what is feasible? Because we have a lot of plans that were written at kind of different periods of our organization and they need to kind of come forward to help guide that work. And that's a big part of what the facility condition assessment is going to do for us as well. It's going to help guide that work. So what I would say is more to come. It doesn't appear because at this time, from a CIP priority list, you know, we don't have community center space in Overlake, for example. Now, if we were able to achieve community center space in Overlake, I'd be like, ooh, can we make that like cultural arts and community center space? Because I agree with you, it continues to be a huge need. And we continue to look for ways to both partner and create those spaces wherever we can.
I appreciate that. And I just think, and maybe it's just the way that we have, we craft our vision, because I think it is, it's good for us to be clear that it's not necessarily in our plans realistically. We don't have the space to be able to develop. So we don't want to promise something we don't have. But if we know that there's parts of our community that are actually going to look, like to the point around the way we're also looking at other things for kind of private development of public amenities, you know, I see that as like an effort, that that's basically the route that they've gone, since I know myself and Mayor Bernie at many board meetings have reiterated kind of where the, the city's at, even though I think they're, yeah, we do hear from our community a lot about this. And I think we will continue to. And so being able to at least have in our vision of how we'll support community efforts to either develop this or to do planning on it, or if we don't have the space yet, to at least set the vision that like, we'd like to have more community center space in Overlake. And we'd like to have more cultural arts and performing arts space. I don't know if there's a way that we can kind of encompass that in this, in the 20-year vision. But I guess that, that would be my one ask on that, is that we don't cut ourselves off from saying it's something we'd like to have, even if it's, it's not necessarily in like the project list.
So can I clarify the ask, just to make sure that I'm on the same page? So within kind of our 20-year vision or kind of goal section, addressing the fact that we would like to at least, you know, help support and partner to create additional cultural arts and performing arts spaces throughout the city to help meet the need of our diverse community. Am I hearing that correctly?
That would be my request. I don't know if other councilmembers are on board.
I think, I mean, it's in line with the work that we want to do and are doing and have heard from the community. And if, if we've kind of neglected for that to be called out so specifically, I think it's a, it's in line with the work that we want to do. So.
Yeah. And this is starting to sound like some of the conversations that we're having around these POPs or privately owned spaces. And going back to even the comments about the rooftop gardens, these are convers, or rooftop spaces. These are things that we've been talking with the long-range team about with the Overlake incentive package. And when a developer comes and says, we want to provide some indoor community space, that we will have something ready to go saying, these are the types of things that we really hear we need and that we want to have. And that would include things like art gallery space, cultural performance space. And that would come apart, become part of that development agreement. And I think the park plan does lay out a lot of those ideas. It might not get to the point of where it's going to be and how it exactly looks, to Lorraine's point about the operations. But that is something that we've been working towards and hoping to formalize.
Great.
Thank you. And I think I would be on board with, as you laid it out, having worked in a cultural arts organization for over six years, it is a huge organizational lift. And I think us supporting it in other ways is, is probably the, the best route. And I appreciate that feedback. Mayor Bernie and then Councilmember Carson.
Yeah, I just want to add to this conversation. Part of making sure, not just the park plan, but, you know, obviously our comprehensive plan is taking a look at what, what features in our community would we like to have in the future. And knowing full well that the city itself cannot fund these things, but that make them opportunities for other entities, like, like you were mentioning, for these private-public partnerships possibly, or just opportunities there. Because remember, the park plan has a CIP list. And we also have CIP lists for the rest of the city as well, for other, like our, our MOC, you know, fire police stations, whatever might come of those, you know, whatever's next for our community as well with other public structures. So we have to kind of see it in context of all of that. So taking a look at the Performing Arts Center in particular, in kind of in whole, what the rest of the opportunities that our community needs is, is probably really important to, to set the expectation that it's not, it, it doesn't look like it's going to be a city project, but it would be a project the city would support, like other things would be as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. So as the, as the representative to the aforementioned One Redmond Foundation Board, I've tried to set their expectations appropriately and it has not deterred them one bit, which, and, and I've, I've made the case that the mayor just made, which is, we have other, very much more pressing, mission-critical things like replacing the MOS, you know, maintenance and operations of everything we do in the city has to be a priority. Unfortunately, you have, I mean, that's why people elected us is because we can discern priorities and, and we understand that getting water to and from houses has a priority over performing arts. That said, they're, they're undaunted with their support because it is part of their core mission to activate the downtown and Overlake in Redmond. So despite my continued level setting of their expectations, they're, they're undeterred. So, which is great because, and they do have a passion for this. And, you know, I, I too want to see, in fact, had conversations with- And, you know, I, too, want to see, in fact, had conversations with Mayor Marchionne when he was mayor about this idea of a developer potentially in Overlake being that potential space that the city could rely on for performing arts. So, and there's a lot of development left to happen in Overlake, so that it isn't, that history isn't written yet. So, anyway, so I'm also supportive of it. I just, we do have other things that are going to have to take priority for, you know, our mission-critical things, so, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much for talking about one of my favorite topics of all tonight. So thanks so much for keeping Overlake on the agenda every time. One of the things that is significant about that neighborhood is that unlike the other neighborhoods in the Lake Washington School District, they're able to, and we see this reflected in the maps provided in the Park Plan, and it's been a discussion of council before, in the Lake Washington School District, residents can access those school sites, some of which have playgrounds, some of which have playfields and other amenities. Dr. Hamilton, is there any conversation with the Bellevue School District about what enhanced collaboration might look like, or opening of gates ever? Where are we at with that relationship? I'm just curious.
I am not aware of any conversations we've had with the Bellevue School District, but that's absolutely something that we can undertake. We have a really good collaborative relationship with Lake Washington School District, but I appreciate you bringing up that kind of opportunity for us to collaborate with the Bellevue School District, as that does, of course, like you said, with Overlake, impact that community. So we can definitely reach out to the Bellevue School District and see if we can't start having some different conversations with them about the needs of that community.
I appreciate that. I realize it's a detail a little smaller than the rest of the conversation tonight, but it just came to me, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you both very much. Thank you, Ms. Chapman. We will see you next month, and we will look forward to the potential approval of this on November 6th.
Great. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you. Moving on.
I'm going to bring this slideshow back up here in just a second. And turn it right over to Glenn.
Good evening, all. I'm Glenn Coyle, Senior Planner, Long Range Planning, and we'll be discussing the final draft of the Economic Vitality Element. Before I jump into the key updates, what's are addressed here, just also wanted to just remind everybody here in our viewing audience that the Economic Vitality Element has been, really been kind of reimagined for Redmond 2050. The current iteration and previous versions really focused on economic development and kind of city services and operations, whereas on this element, we really wanted to align with our 2050 kind of goals and themes, and really bring it to the concept of economic vitality, which is, you know, a lot broader than strictly business and economic development. So with that said, the goals of their Economic Vitality Element are a sustainable and resilient economy, a high quality of life, and a diverse workforce and business community. With those goals and kind of vision for this updated element, you can see where the key updates we had made around equity and quality of life, mitigating displacement of legacy and vital community businesses, preserving manufacturing, industrial land uses, addressing the barriers created by the high cost of housing, land, and space in Redmond, supporting a diverse workforce, and just the continuing efforts to achieve a sustainable economy. So we heard a lot of recurring themes throughout the last almost two years of this process, it could be even longer. But as we kept hearing these different themes, we kept updating and kind of revising the policies and making sure that either the wording was correct, or just adding new policies and things like that. So around education and workforce, you know, we addressed it in different policies, neighborhood-based businesses, public spaces for private use, business diversity, need for 18-hour city nightlife, and business retention. So as noted here, a lot of these concepts are addressed in some of the policies noted here. And what's new in the final draft? This is the changes really specific between the second draft and the final draft, and incorporates just additional, I don't want to say tweaks, but just kind of clarification and added of policies that we heard from council, the community, and planning commission. So some of these got a little technical, we'd have to probably look at the policies, but like workforce development got really as its own specific policy, where it was kind of combined with some other issues. The concept of business districts. And then, of course, we also just ensured, like, the Redmond Economic Development Strategy, which was strategic plan, which is moving forward. So we wanted to make sure we reference that as a strategic plan in the document, so that this element supports that. Other things, I should also note that the Economic Vitality Element is much more holistic kind of view compared to other elements of the comprehensive plan. So a lot of the policies in here really are supporting other things that go towards economic vitality of the community. So, you know, transportation, housing elements, our natural environment element, even some of our climate stuff, all really support the economic vitality of the community. So we have kind of very, more simplified, no, I wouldn't say simplified, but kind of more visionary-type policies that support that, but are more specified, in more detail, say, in our transportation element, and then specifically in different parts. So the same thing for parks, where a lot of the things that support economic vitality are in the park element, or more specific in the Park Plan. Let's see, one more slide. No. So that's really of note, what's new in the final draft of the Economic Vitality Element. And I would just, one of the things that had come up specifically during the Redmond 2050 process is the, kind of the 10-minute, I know there's different terms for that, the 10-minute community, but, so we also have numerous policies that really support that. You could see EV16, EV17, talk about resident serving, neighborhood-based businesses, also the concept of business districts, that all go towards, all these policies really do, going towards that kind of 10-minute community. So any?
Before we get to the discussion, I wanted to add, we went back to look at, kind of what was the specific feedback that we heard from council, because this was in 2022, so it had been a while. And they were themes around manufacturing businesses, about the kinds of businesses that we want to make sure we retain space for in Redmond, business diversity, displacement, and also wages and income. And I think those are really well captured in the final draft. I would, of course, welcome your feedback on that. But just going back and comparing what we heard from you and then what's in the final draft, I hope you'll see that we were listening and that we think we did a good job of capturing what we had heard from you all.
Thank you. Who wants to kick us off for our discussion? All right, I will. Can you just briefly talk about why Smart City was removed from EV12?
There's hours of Planning Commission discussion that you can dive into if you want more details. I think at the Planning Commission, the conversation was around the connotation of Smart City, and what does it mean, and what does it connote. And so the Planning Commission recommended not using that specific term, and speaking to, to really the outcome that we're after, and not necessarily the means so much. And that was, very briefly, the nature of the conversation, but it was, it was very good discussion. I think that more time spent on that concept for the economic vitality than maybe on any other single issue.
Okay, great. Thank you. The one thing that maybe I'm just missing, and please tell me if I am, I know back in 2022, we had had some conversation about live workspaces. I know we have some here in downtown Redmond. But I was thinking along the lines of, I think there's some coming online in Marymore, too, where it's like an artist space and a loft area. Can you point me to where that would be in here, if I'm missing it, or just talk about how that's incorporated?
I would say that it's not specifically called out. That gets more to like a zone-in kind of regulatory aspect, but I would highlight policies such as EV20, which talk about encouraging a mix of housing types and options to allow workers at different wage levels to live and work in Redmond. We also talk about under EV25, even maybe EV26, that allows for those affordable commercial spaces and up flexibility. Those are kind of the policies that give the direction towards implementing something like that in the more regulatory thing that would allow that.
Really appreciate that clarity. Thank you.
I would add that next week, when we are here with you for Phase Two policies, the Landy settlement is a really good place to look for that. And I know Director Helen sent that out by email earlier today, and I don't want to get us confused between those things, but that's a good place to look for it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on? Council Vice President Kritzer.
Well, I'm really excited about the different policies and appreciated the answers in the matrix around where we can see those complete communities, the different pieces that we added in here for, that will help to encourage that. So I am, but I am curious if you can just share with us, when we, in terms of practice, how these will translate? So when we think about, now I'm trying to look up, it's the one around creating neighborhood-based business, and I think there's like a neighborhood district, and I'm trying to find the number one, on that. When we talk about those, is it that we will actually, when we, in practice, do this, we'll design certain zones in our city that will correspond to this vision, essentially saying that you may now develop commercial under certain, under certain conditions in specific places in our city? Or can you just explain how it's going to work in practice to implement the vision? Because I think, obviously, these words are powerful, because they'll lead to what we actually do in action, but I'd love to take a look forward on that.
That's a really great point, that the words are, the words are powerful. So like EV16, for example, says, support and incentivize neighborhood-based businesses to enhance walkability. As Glenn said, that's one of multiple policies here, but also, and especially in the Landy settlement that you'll see next week, that all drive toward this idea of complete neighborhoods. And so the way you would see that implemented then is in months from now, when you're looking at zoning regulations for residential zones, you would see more opportunities for either home-based businesses, or businesses operating out of residential structures, or just, you know, maybe there are places in residential zones where it's appropriate to have a little neighborhood center that most people can walk to. So that's how you would see it implemented in the code. And then it's really up to people who own property or develop property to make that a reality, right? Or who want to open a business.
So, and yeah, to be more specific in my question, are we going to be looking at, for example, we'll be saying this, you know, for example, along 166th, that that corridor will be where you might be able to develop in the Education Hill neighborhood, like, within a certain type of use? Or will it be like, within that whole neighborhood, we would, we would put a certain regulation, but it would be in a way that we would likely see it develop only in certain areas?
I don't think we know the answer to that yet. The drafting hasn't started. But the feedback that we've collected from the community points to a willingness to explore some different ideas. And so I think we will be doing that, and maybe sharing some different concepts with the community and with the Planning Commission, so that we can bring you something that has been well, well-vetted and has some community buy-in behind it. But I don't think we know yet.
Great. And I think, I think this is one of the most, the things I'm most excited about in this plan. I think it helps us think towards the future and the development of more walkable neighborhoods. And I'm just excited of kind of how we develop that. And I love what you said about bringing our community along with us, because I think overall, we've heard interest from our community, but being able to kind of like talk with folks in each of the neighborhoods and do the outreach like you've done already in doing this, the development of this plan so far will be really critical as we actually develop the regulations and kind of think about how this comes into practice. But given that plan, I'm super excited about this part of the, what's here.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson, did I see your hand? Okay. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Council Vice, or Council President, sorry. So I normally try to drive down a level, but I'm going to go different. When I think about economic vitality, I try to understand what that means in terms of people, because that's really what we're talking about. Economic vitality means the well-being and the financial and the health and welfare of people. We're not talking about inanimate objects. We're talking about people. So, and people come in all kinds of different perspectives. And so when I think about economic vitality in Redmond, I'm not clear on what your guiding definition of economic vitality is at this point. So if you could just give me sort of a review of what, what we mean, I think I could begin to understand some of your approaches.
I would say there is no one clear-cut definition of economic vitality. It's really a group of things that make a community vital, that that's where the term, and that's that long-term resiliency, that long-term sustainability, that cycle of constant growth and rebirth, and attracting businesses, attracting people to the community, the people that want to invest, that want to live here, that, that in terms attracts other businesses, because, hey, we have a great workforce, we have great schools. And they're all kind of self-emphasizing, and it creates this kind of cycle that propels the community forward and keeps it going with these high kind of quality of life and other things like that. And that, of course, you know, attracts, have great amenities and other things like that. So trying to keep that cycle going of the community, you know, constantly bettering itself and keeping it attractive and attractive for businesses, et cetera, et cetera, it just creates that, it's that cycle. And I think that's what we speak to when we talk about economic vitality. And with that kind of vision, and with the goals that we kind of outlined in that, that's where we kind of set the policies around supporting that.
I would like to add that with your question, Councilmember Fields, and then the question from Councilmember Stewart on the, on the parks element earlier, I am more convinced that tonight, and I'm hoping now to convince you, that these vision statements at the beginning of the element can do a lot of good communicating work for us. And so I think my response is, you know, there's a, there's a little bit at the end of the vision statement for the Economic Vitality Element that talks about our three economic vitality goals, sustainable and resilient economy, high quality of life, and a diverse workforce and business community. And I think everything that comes before that, in that economic vitality vision statement, is really just an expansion on those three bullet points, or at least it should be. I think those, those three are really what we're trying to get at. And so I think for the purpose of this comprehensive plan, that is, that's where the definition is found, and that's really what we're driving toward.
So based on both of what you've said, both of you, economic vitality is very much tied to transportation, to the parks, the outcome of how our parks and livability looks, and some of our other goals and aspects around welcoming and equity, all of that. If I'm a 25-year-old just coming to Redmond, economic vitality means opportunity for me. If I'm a 71-year-old, soon-to-be-retired council member, I might be thinking, how can I intend you to live a high-quality life and not spend all of whatever tiny bit of money I've saved up? So economic vitality comes in lots of shapes. And I appreciate your response, Mr. Churchill, because I do, I can now appreciate more some of the other vision statements and how they contribute to economic vitality. The only thing I would add, and I've mentioned this over the past couple of years a few times. times, part of that economic vitality is, in fact, revenue for city government. And we need to make sure that we're encouraging a balance between our growth and our sales tax and other sources of revenue. And I have to believe that the infrastructure and all of those things that people demand and expect need to be paid for, so that economic vitality has to be balanced. And again, I've made the argument that our particular sales tax in the city of Redmond is not reflecting the growth in population, and it has to be, if you're going to get economic vitality, that has to be addressed at some point. Thank you for your responses.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Mute button was evading me for a second there. I appreciate that. Mr. Churchill, you got it. The three bullet points: sustainable and resilient economy, high quality of life, diverse workforce and business community. That's absolutely a story that we can help tell, so thank you so much. We have really thoughtful planning commissioners, and that's evident in some of these, in some of the changes that we've seen in the last few versions of this. So I look forward to a chance, for a chance to thank them for their thoughtfulness. On that note, I have two questions. Number one, on the high quality of life, I do see a lot of attention to equity, and we know that that is an overarching statement, sorry, an overarching value of the entire comprehensive planning process. I just want to confirm, maybe, Mr. Churchill, this is a question for you. When we talk about high quality of life and economic vitality, the next question in my mind is, for whom? Have we given enough consideration to date in this process to make sure that we have addressed equity in your estimation on this part of the plan?
Glenn said that, you said, "Mr. Churchill," so I guess I'll answer the question.
Sorry. I'm so sorry if I'm getting that. So sorry, Glenn.
I'll start, and Glenn can add what I've forgotten.
Okay.
One of the things that comes to mind, I think we, with all of the outreach for Redmond 2050, I think we've made a much more intentional effort and successful effort to reach populations that haven't participated in planning processes before. With economic vitality in particular, we conducted, for example, focus groups with small business owners and overlay many of whom are immigrants to this country, operating businesses here. And it gave us a good window into how their businesses operate, what their challenges are, what opportunities they see in the future. I think, and then I think the second part of the answer, so in terms of, second part of the response is, there is an economic vitality for whom, there's, I think, an intentional focus on this idea of a diverse workforce, and it's diverse in any way that you think of that term, in the type of job that someone has, the type of background someone has. And that's really an emphasis that wasn't here before, that idea of a diverse workforce. And I think that's a reflection of how we have, that's one way that we've been incorporating this idea of equity and economic vitality for whom into this plan. What else would you add, Glenn?
Yeah, I, you know, agree with that, and I would say that all the policies, we kind of looked through that lens too, and we added policy. So one of the ones, EV31, I think is a great policy, where we talk about supporting policies and actions that lead to income self-sufficiency for both workers and business owners in Redmond at a range of skill and educational levels. And that gets back to, you know, we're not just a high-tech city with people with masters and PhDs, and that, and for economic vitality, that isn't all we want to attract. We want a city where all kinds of businesses, small, that, you know, different ranges, where everybody can have those kind of businesses and be able to live in the city at those different ranges. And we recognize that is a challenge for our economic vitality, where if it's skewed too much on the higher income level, that also has an impact on the economic vitality community. It's the diversity, the range of all aspects of the community that are really important. So we try to capture that and recognize that's, you know, really important for our vitality. And hopefully, our policies throughout capture that.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I do apologize for my poorly worded question. I think what you artfully remind, you both artfully reminded me of is that we have achieved a certain outcome in our city because of the policies and the priorities of the past. And this really does feel like a turn in the road towards something different and better and a place of more belonging for more folks in Redmond, and I really appreciate your work on that. And I know you do so much work for these thoughtful commissioners. So my final question is just about EV12. Could you help me understand a little bit about what the conversation is with that policy?
That is back to the smart city policy. Not, I would probably would defer to planning commission, maybe some of the comments in previous meetings. As Jeff, Mr. Churchill, had noted, some of the concepts really was around the term "smart city," quote unquote, and maybe some perhaps, and I don't want to oversimplify the planning commission's discussions, because there were a lot, but kind of there's some negative connotations to that term, where overall, they were supportive of the kind of technology-forward aspect. I know that was a kind of part of a Redmond 2050 theme and kind of some of that modernization. But I think it was more the term "smart city" and some of those negative connotations, potentially around privacy, security, things like that. And so really, it was just a matter of supporting the concept, but wordsmithing to less controversial terminology, which was actually kind of challenging. So that's where we, you know, we felt like we had direction, you know, a lot of our city operations do go towards that modernization and utilizing technology, both without the negative connotations of that.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't realize that, I didn't connect to. Does the policy, in order to be wordsmithed, in order to be more sensitive, does it lose clarity? For the policy that is to come?
That's a great question. You know, it turns out not everybody agrees what a smart city is. So when smart city was in there, in the language, there was disagreement about what that really meant, and there were examples provided in issues matrix, and that wasn't really working either. So I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that adding the term will generate the desired clarity. I think where the planning commission ultimately landed in not using that term, and also, like, the word "technology," it's not in this policy either, is that the planning commission was looking for something broader that recognized that innovation is a good thing, that the innovation doesn't have to be synonymous with technology, and that data privacy and security are important. I think those are the kind of three keys of their discussion.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Council Vice President Kritzer, and then Councilmember Carson. Do you want to differ?
I can defer.
Oh, okay.
I might offer that our Director Marchand might have a good kind of big-picture view of this as well. Not that all innovations are technology-forward, but that he and I have had conversations about the term "smart cities" as well, and he's also is not, doesn't feel like it really encompasses the direction the city should be going, because it's more of a brand than a really understanding of what it could be for our community. So if, it seems like, since multiple council members have brought up this particular one, I think that it might be worth us getting some feedback from him and perhaps a few other people in the city, just to kind of make sure we're getting good clarity on what this means. I think that, I would assume all of us would agree, innovation is wonderful and creating an opportunity to have, you know, data privacy and security as well. But maybe there's a better way to, to, not, I'm not, you don't want to wordsmith it, but a better way to describe that in this policy that would fit everyone's needs better.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to actually speak on a different item, but I do want to weigh in on this. And I appreciate, and would love to go back and actually watch those sections of the planning commission meetings to hear what they were discussing, and really appreciate that thought. I do agree that I think if you don't have that context, without the word "technology," it's a little confusing why we're talking about data privacy and security. And I would say that, from the sense I get from a lot of our residents, they do like the idea of us specifically harnessing technology to think about how we can deliver services more effectively, efficiency, efficiently, how we can think about, you know, being able to provide better services to our residents, as well as be more sustainable. There's like a lot of pieces around that, and honestly, I, I mean, I'm biased, because I actually, in my day job, used to work on smart city. But I think that there's a lot of people that really like the idea of our city being forward-looking and using technology. And so I don't know if we fully want to just like strip that out, at least even the word. Maybe it's just technological innovations is the, is just putting technological. And I get, and maybe there's technological and other innovations, but not having that might be a little bit dismissing the point there on that piece.
I think the planning commission did have a lot of discussion about this, but we can look at it again. We can also take into account anything that Director Marchand might have to add. And basically, I think what we're trying to get at, based on this conversation, is what we're describing, not what the brand of what we're describing is.
Yeah, great, thanks. And I don't, yeah, I don't think that the brand is that important. So a different question that I had for you all, as we talk about economic vitality, and in particular, what allows us to address barriers to especially lower-income people being able to live and work in our city, we talk about housing. I've brought this up, I think, over the last couple of years, as we've been talking about our comp plan, is where childcare fits in our vision. I think this may be the part, but it may be that it's in a different part, because I feel like each time I bring it up, you say, "Actually, childcare is going to feature somewhere else." But when I think about, in particular, offering our workforce the ability to be able to access work and to have a workforce that's engaged, especially making sure, you know, post-pandemic, that along gender lines, that we can have women returning to the workforce, especially we know that during the pandemic, disproportionate amount of BIPOC women dropped out of the workforce, that if we want to see that return to work, one piece of it is childcare. And we know that we have some challenges with childcare. So I really do, I don't know if it's here, but somewhere in the comp plan, I would like to have us have personally, and I hope that my fellow consumers will join me, a specific spelling out of a vision as a city to be able to support equitable access to childcare. And part of that, when we think about economic vitality as well, is I think in terms of the workforce development, is also the support for the childcare workforce. And obviously, those are bigger policy conversations for us to have, but I do think that that's one of the industries where we're currently facing some major challenges, and would love for us to kind of have that be a part of our vision when we think about an equitable city, because having access to housing is helpful if people want to live in a place, but also having access to the childcare that they need to be able to go to work is so important. So I'm not sure exactly if it fits in here, and I will look to you of where exactly we can fit it, or if you have it in future chapters. But I did want to bring that up as one place that I would continue to like to see it show up in our vision.
That's a great point. Thank you for raising that. I think, so one argument that can be made is, if you squint at EV31, and this idea of income self-sufficiency, so access to affordable childcare is important for people being able to participate in the workforce, right, and earn income. So it doesn't say childcare there. And maybe that's a change that we can make to be more specific about that, but that's the kind of place it could belong. I think it could definitely belong in this chapter.
I think, I think there, or I was looking, in terms of encouraging a mixture of housing types and options that allows workers at different wage levels to live and work in Redmond, I could also see that being encouraged, a mix of housing types and access to affordable, to childcare options, because it's really also about, there's different types of childcare, and I think part of our vision should include not just, making sure that there's access to subsidized childcare in addition to kind of market-rate childcare, which is obviously extremely expensive. So maybe having that in that, in EV20, could be an interesting one.
It's, I think that's an excellent point. I think that economic vitality and those support services or support opportunities are needed for individuals to have childcare. There might be other things as well, services that are needed in order for individuals to be able to work in their lives, you know, having aging parents, think of the other end of the spectrum of needing support services there. I don't know if that goes, if you can squint at it or squeeze it into one of these, but perhaps, is there a problem with adding another one?
Oh, no.
Is there a limit?
No. No, actually, we are trying to be, there's a few things that we tried to accomplish when we were doing the needs assessment early on, and we were looking at how our complerance and plan had performed in the past. We were trying to take out regulatory language. We were trying to actually raise it to the level of policy language, because there are many regulatory choices that can flow from policy language, but there isn't a limit to the number of policies. That said, we shouldn't provide too much duplication, because there are so many policies, there are tensions when you're applying those policies, for instance, in the context of development review, that would require a balancing with an unwieldy number of policies that have shades of differences. Now, I think that the childcare policy is in there. It might be in the human services section. We will be verifying. We can add it if it's not specific. There's not a problem with that. I think it just might have landed in a different location. I believe that might be true, because I remember that was in the Housing Action Plan as well. So we will verify, can certainly come back and pinpoint where it ended up if there needs to be. It sounds like there is at least some nodding agreement among the council members, I can see nodding, that there, that the reference to daycares is probably a worthy thing to include. And note that, remember your early work, where we did hear you informed some other work, which includes, for instance, impact fee regulations, such as the one that would waive childcare, the impact fees associated with childcare facilities.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And yeah, I would just say, I think at a high level, in the same way that we call out housing, or we call out transportation, like when we think about growth, for me, I just feel like childcare is always the one that we don't say actively as loudly, but when people look at their pocketbooks of how much they're spending, when they look at their ability, so if we think if you have to go to work, what are the couple of things you need? I think, as you said, another thing people might need is, is like, how do you, how do you get to work? But then, where do you, where do you have your kids go? And that does include not just early childcare, but it's also things like aftercare and those types of things. So it's really for everyone who has children between zero to 18 in our community that this is impacting. So I just, I just think it's worth it to call it out, maybe in multiple sections if needed, but I agree on not needing to duplicate.
Okay. Thank you for that feedback.
I would also tend to agree that it should be called out. I don't have kids, so this doesn't impact me, but I will share that a friend of mine, when she found out she was pregnant, the first phone call she made was to her daycare to get the child on the waitlist. The second call was the OB-GYN. So it is a large problem in our area of not having enough places for kids to go, and it is a huge expense that I think we should be doing all we can, as we're talking about the impact fees and all of that, to help mitigate some of that, some of that constraint on the system. Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So not to break this up, but I did want to go back to the, real quickly to the term "smart cities," and I honestly do not understand why there's any controversy over it at all. It's like saying a combustion engine. It's not even as specific as a particular technology or approach. And if you look at the Wikipedia definition of it, it's very innocuous, and I think... If, and if you look at the Wikipedia definition of it, it's very innocuous and I think is, is a pretty good, good two sentences about what it, what it is and what we kind of expect that to deliver the city in terms of functionalities, so.
Let us, because the Planning Commission did have a very robust discussion, it makes sense, Councilmember Carson. I agree with you that we should document why it was that the Planning Commission felt the way they did. And so how, we will create a new matrix that'll be things from Phase One that we can always come back to, and then things from Phase Two, and just make sure that we reflect what the council, what the, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission actually had a conversation about.
Well, and the, I just think of, these are terms of art. These are, these are things that people have come to know what they mean in, because they're, they're nebulous ideas, but they, they have, they have very general applications. And so that's why I'm like, I, I don't understand why this is such a problem.
And I, I think in a tech-forward community, probably many of the people we interact with would agree with you. I would hearken back to some of the conversation we had during the, the Redmond Town Center discussion, when we were naming specific types of green building programs and options available. The Planning Commission stepped away from that as well, because remember, these plans need to be more enduring. We're looking at a very long time continuum. And while smart, smart city might have a reference to us and a relevance to us today, the environmental community and the tech community move so quickly, it would be, I think, what the Planning Commission was trying to get after was that they would want to describe what they think it is, as opposed to using that term.
I, I think I understand, but this is not lead silver or, you know, any of the, this is not a standard that is set by someone. This is a very open and broad term. It's not, that's what I don't get is, if it was a, yeah, if, if we're talking to Kleenex versus a Costco tissue, then I would understand, but this is not that, so.
Like I said, we'll happily add it to the matrix from Phase One, the open items for matrix from Phase One, and just provide a more robust explanation of the Planning Commission's rationale.
Thank you. Any other questions? I just had one real quick on EV 30. Could you just briefly describe what we see as growth in manufacturing sector? Because I know we don't have a lot of space for growth, and I was wondering if there was a specific thought in mind for that one.
So we know that there's a lot of stress towards opening up our manufacturing industrial areas to housing, but there's also been a lot of discussion that maybe the manufacturing in related zones, when I, you know, say MP and some of those other ones, maybe don't have the zoning or regulatory aspects that allows all these different kind of emerging businesses. So I think the direction we heard from council was that we have to protect our existing areas that have manufacturing and at, at the minimum, you know, not allow housing or keep it very minimal. So that, that was kind of the idea is to support that overall vision that as a city we have to maintain some kind of manufacturing office, industrial-type lands, zones for those purposes. So we can have jobs, we can have more of that high-tech manufacturing, those different kinds of job kind of producing land uses and.
And I think that's the conversation I remember, but it specifically says, and grow the manufacturing sector. So that's where I was confused. Mayor Bernie?
I can just, I can just add a little bit. For example, you know, we have our space district that is a growth in manufacturing area. We are the largest builder of small satellites in the world, and that happens in Redmond. So those are areas that we want to encourage growth in, just as an example.
Okay, that's what I kind of assumed it was. I just wanted to.
And we say growth, we don't mean in land area. We're really talking about like jobs or the, yeah, or the, the industries itself as opposed to land area.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone on this? Look at economic vitality. Going once? All right, going twice. I think we are good. Thank you all very much. We will look forward to those few things that we were just talking about on a potential future matrix. Does that bring us to the end of this item in your mind?
That is the end. The, the last slide says next steps. We've already heard them, which is the park plan will be back to you in November in the park element, and this will come back to you next year with the rest of Phase One and Phase Two.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carson.
So before they, before they leave, so I, I'm trying to remember, I don't remember us talking about the, the jobs target numbers in, and so it's in the matrix, but it says it's closed on 9/12. And so it was Councilmember Forsyth and I asked about, well, I asked about methodologies. I, I don't like the answer that was provided. I don't think that, you know, I, I don't understand how we arrived at the numbers we arrived at, and even with the explanation, I, I'm still grasping for how that. So, so perhaps it's something we can talk about, you know, in a, in another setting, but I'm just still not understanding why we would put so much growth in, job growth in, in Overlake when we have already so many, I mean, almost literally, well, I don't know what they have anymore in Overlake, but in terms of Microsoft's jobs. But at, at one point, it was tens of thousands in, in Overlake, so.
So I think that would be, actually, we can factor that into the conversation, a continuing feedback on that during the EIS, the supplemental update that we're, the update that we're providing on the release of the supplemental EIS, because it has more information about the allocation of growth between Overlake and downtown, the shift of some of that growth because of the assumptions from Overlake to downtown. But there are also very different geographic conditions in downtown versus Marymore versus Overlake that actually led to some believed, basically, growth constraints in those areas that are not present in Overlake. So we'll go more into depth about that in the EIS materials that'll be coming to you for briefing.
Oh, and I think I was absent. This is why I, I was, yes.
I also think we misunderstood your question. We answered, why is Redmond's total job target 24,000? But you were asking, why is it allocated the way it was?
Yes.
We can get you.
I can see why you were not satisfied with the response.
Okay, very good. Well, yeah, that, because it's the allocation that's problematic to me. And I think, given the way we're seeing redevelopment happen in downtown, with some of what used to be old-time residential and, you know, small offices, they, they kind of morphed into small offices off of kind of the main, you know, off of both 85th and Redmond Way and Cleveland, and some of the arterials, 164th. And I, I, we're seeing those neighborhoods either change into residential or, and, and the question is, is, you know, is, isn't there more room in downtown than that for, for that? And also, does downtown include the Marymore Village?
Marymore Village is its own area. So some of the, so you, the EIS actually provides some great tables on how, how the growth and the, has been allocated between Overlake Village and, and downtown and Marymore Village.
Yeah.
And I think that'll be helpful. It also describes just some of the constraints and some of the assumptions that we made, for instance, that, based on past policy decisions you've made. So for instance, on the temporary construction dewatering.
Yeah.
It is going to limit over time the access to below-grade parking.
Right.
And as a result, it will likely make office more, less desirable, because the, the parking will have to be constrained.
Less doable even.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we, that factored into our assumptions that there were going to be some things that were going to be more desirable because of the relationship, and office might not be one of those things that's more desirable until there's reliance on light rail and people are willing to use light rail to get to jobs that are in downtown.
And I think my concern about is, is balance. So if we have only residents in downtown, then we, and we don't have any jobs, then someone can't live and work in downtown. They have to go somewhere else, which puts a burden some, either on light rail or on, on, you know, regular, regular transportation modes. So that's, I think that's my concern, is that we're, we're seeing more jobs go into Overlake than, than downtown. And it's not necessarily that it can't accept more. I think that it probably can, but, but it seems like it's out of balance a little bit to me, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thanks. And I think part of the question was answered by Director Helen. I did bring this up during ombuds last week, and I, I do think this is a really important discussion to be very clear on with respect to the balance that Councilmember Carson described. I think we should have been having that discussion maybe six or seven years ago before we built so many apartment buildings and without the co-location of office space. I think we've sort of boxed ourselves in. But as I said last week, and I had a small conversation with Director Helen following that meeting, I really, if we're going to talk about this, I really want to talk about what that, what the impacts and the need will be on the size, I'm sorry, the height of buildings in order to, you know, I know that, I know that that's all part of the conversation, but I don't, I don't want us to sort of soft-shoe away from the idea that in order to add another 6,000 jobs downtown, we're likely going to need some 12 or higher-story buildings in downtown. And if that's not true, I would like to hear that that's not true. But if it is true, I would like that to be part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Feel like we're wrapped up now officially. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Our next item, last item, is council talk time. Does anyone have anything for council talk time discussion? All right, I will run down my quick little list here. You all received a vision, mission, and ready statement email from council leadership this afternoon. We worked on this for a couple of weeks now, and we talked with Anita and Jan. So just sorry that we got that to you a bit late. So we sent that to you with the expectation that if you have feedback, you will email it to Jason. He will correlate, or collate that those, those comments, feedback, thoughts, and then we can talk about that at the next study session and talk time. So I appreciate your future work on that, future reading. Also, we are likely to need to have a 6:00 meeting prior to a study session for the operational agreement for the health through housing, just giving everyone a heads up. That will come sometime in November. We're looking at dates now, but we'll, CO files has alerted me that we will need that space to make sure we have enough time to have those conversations, and we can arrange for dinner, since I know that's a bit early, and we can just figure that out. But you will get an update about when that will be. Just wanted to give everyone a bit of a heads up in advance. Also, we're looking at scheduling the retreat for next year. So we have two dates of possibilities, and one of them is probably better than the other. Just wanted to get a temperature check from everyone. AWC days are in January, I think the 27th and the 28th. And we had initially picked that weekend to have our retreat and kind of wanted to get some feedback from folks if that's just too much in one week. So AWC days would be the 24th and the 25th, and then we would have a retreat 27, 28. Or alternatively, we could have our retreat the 3rd and the 4th. So if you have a preference, let myself or Ms. Gritzer know, and we will get that scheduled. Did you want to add to that?
And I just wanted to comment, we talked about this. We, we're just trying to, since we're, we're hoping, we've had such good work with Anita to be able to have her help with the council retreat next year, and we want to be sensitive to the fact that we're not planning any of the agenda of that retreat, since there will be a new council leadership that will be elected at that time. And so, but we did want to do a, a future good service to future council leadership and the council to actually get something on the agenda, since when we had the transition, now almost two years ago, I think we didn't end up having our retreat until like late March because of that transition. So we just wanted to be able to get something on the books and, so that, that way we can kind of plan this out, so.
And we wanted to make sure we got on Anita's calendar as early as possible, since she is a very, very busy lady.
Yeah.
So if you have a preference, let us know if you have a strong preference. Otherwise, we will likely go with the 3rd and the 4th. Councilmember Carson.
I would have a preference not to do it in such close proximity to AWC days.
So you're in favor of the 3rd and the 4th?
Well, I mean, yeah, I don't know what other days are, are possible, but I don't think doing four days in a row where, basically, I think that's just too much to, I think we need some decompression time.
Agreed.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Stewart.
I agree with Mr. Carson. I also think that is more fair to the future council leadership in terms of being able to form an opinion about what they might want the agenda for that to be. So just even getting them, I, I understand the balance of not wanting to have it in March. It, it is, and I would also want to make sure that we are doing it, we are taking this step to reserve Anita's time should the council want that, but we will have a different council. And I don't want to, but we may have different council members, and we may have different council leadership and all of those things. So I just want to balance that not too many decisions are made on assumptions that, that cut off what, what the future may want.
Absolutely.
It's a balance.
Absolutely. And, and I believe we're already contracted with her for our next retreat, so we just wanted to make sure we lock down those days for the future leadership to be set up for success, to have those dates secured on her calendar, if that helps provide some clarity. Okay, thank you.
I would note on that point that I think, as, as Council President mentioned, I think part of our contract with her included this one X, one more retreat. But it certainly could be up to the council to discuss after that if we want to keep going that direction with future retreats, or if we would want some other sort of facilitation since, yeah, I guess that that's just, that's something that certainly could be open and definitely open for a future council leadership. One other note I just wanted to make on the compelling reason for change and vision is just that we really, in talking with Anita and, and Jan, tried to think through, I think Council President Forsyth said this in her email, but I just wanted to reiterate, kind of taking in all the different work pieces we had and to actually get something on paper, since it's hard with all the different ideas to figure out how it all comes together, but would just say to everyone, just to take a look at it and see if the words that are reflected there seem to capture the, the general sentiment of what we were going for as a group, and provide any of your changes back. And just a reminder that if you send those to Jason, he'll send those out, and they will be published out for us all to be able to look at with the public to avoid any OPM issues.
Yep, those will be provided on the packet for council talk time. So, great. That is all I have. Does anyone else have anything else to add to council talk time? Does anyone else have anything else to add to council talk time? Seeing none, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you all so much for the great conversation around 2050 tonight. Really appreciate that and digging in on that topic. All right, thank you so much, and we are adjourned.